City council meeting for the city of Galt to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, here. Councilmember Hewer, here. Councilmember Champion, here. Councilmember Powers, Mayor Cruz, here.
Could you all please stand for a second.
Please follow in voices. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, please.
Under government code section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
All right. And you want to go ahead and start this presentation, then we can have people respond to it afterwards?
Sure.
All right, you're on. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this special study session is being held to provide an overview of the preliminary findings, options, and recommendations resulting from the city's current water rate study that is ongoing. While no formal action is recommended at today's study session, we are interested in receiving public and council input as to any specific concerns or questions regarding our recommended approach to needed rate adjustments. After hearing the presentation and any public comments or requests that council provide direction to staff regarding a recommended approach or selection of a different option if you do not agree with staff's recommendation. And this will enable staff and our consultant to finalize the rate study report and bring it back for further consideration, hopefully on the first meeting in November. At this time, Mr. Clarkson, our utilities manager, will provide a brief introduction regarding the rate study process, and then it'll be followed by an overview of the study results presented by Raftellus Financial Consultants.
Mayor, council. Now, I was thinking about three and a half years ago, Richard Prank, I came before you talking about too much water being used, overuse of the water. Boy, have we come a long ways from the outset of that to the approval that we have the water meter installation. Of course, that is completely yet. When we look at some of the... We look at the background, there's so much that comes. It's not something, you know, didn't get started just a couple of months ago when we had Raftellus. It started way back. Apple projects, we had drought conditions, we had a meter project coming around. And when we saw the savings that the customers were doing, it was terrific. Even last year, before all the heavy restrictions happened, people were saving in the 20% range. And we kind of, you know, I kind of felt that that's probably what they'd be able to, pretty easy, because of most of our customers, 75% of them are on that rate. What we did is, we kind of went through crunching numbers and we saw that if we just implemented, implemented, or expanded our rate structure of our current metered customers into the non-metered straight, that we were going to have a revenue problem. But once we saw that, we did a couple of reviews, we kind of crunched some numbers. We need, if we're going to touch anything with our rates, we need to do it before we propose the going through Raftellus Financial Corporation. We looked at the propositions for 18 requirements. These are the five of the key points of the Prop 218. All of them, they're all, you know, basically, you have a pot of money that can only be used for the services that you're proposing, in this case, it's water. And you have a set of customers who are using that water or potentially using that water. How do you divide that up? There's industry standards, methods, Prop 218 requirements, and policy direction. They all combine together for us to come up with cost of service, how it gets allocated. When we approached this study, we gave specific direction to the consultant that we just wanted to try to maintain the revenues that we have right now. And that's where you're going to hear the revenue neutrality. We didn't go in there and judge the budget. We took the budget that the council approved. We added a couple escalators over five years. If you want to look out five years, you know, we kind of estimated what our costs would be and a few other things. And then we started, we started number crunching, we started doing, again, what was required by law to make sure that this is a defensible, not just in front of you and the customers, but also in the court system. It is a rate study that we put together, cost of service. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Habeed Isaac. He's the principal involved in putting together the rate study. It's going to take about 40 minutes. If you have questions, if you really have an itch, go ahead and interrupt him. But I think a lot of questions will be answered, goes through this system. And same with the customers out there, just hang on. We're going to, you know, we're going to be here, have time to answer the questions and stuff. And we keep in mind, as we're doing this, and it's developed, the financial plan all the way through, Prop 218, the whole time, the legality and what's good and as for our customers.
That's the new mayor, city council members, staff, as well as the public. Habeed Isaac with Raftellus, I'm a manager with them. Twelve years' experience in utility rates. It's something that is an important aspect of today's climate, especially with the droughts, and a lot of agencies are looking at their utility rates today. One, to be compliant with the mandatory conservation. Two, to make sure that with that mandatory conservation, you also are going to be revenue sufficient. So, these are the items I'm going to go through today. We're going to first go over financial plan, look at your current financial position. I can talk briefly about the evolution of water rates. Where have water, where do water rates kind of start and where are they progressing to? And where are you in that spectrum? Then about rate design. Now, I'm going to switch gears. One is, how much revenue do you need? And then the other side of the coin is, now, how should you recover that revenue in the most equitable way and fair to your customers? From that standpoint, then we'll look at what is the impact to your customers themselves, based on different usage. And then, there's a couple items that we want correction on from a policy standpoint. Besides crunching the numbers and A divided by B equals C, we also need some direction on some overall policy directions on how much revenue should come from the fixed charge, as well as two other items. So with that, I'll start with the financial plan. Please feel free to ask me questions as I go through this, but we'll also have questions at the end as well. Very time we start with utility rate project. We first looked at your current financials, the enterprise. One thing that we looked at was looking at your current rates and how much revenue it generates with just the CPI index. You have, over the most recent years, been indexing your rates by CPI. But we looked at that continuing forward, you have that through 2017, and we also assume that is going to continue on with the average rate of just under 2%. So very, very modest indexing. With that, we see that you have positive cash flow through 2017, 18, so still quite a few years. But you would see a slight deficit in 18, 19. And the primary driver of that is twofold. One, is that you currently have some repayments occurring today from the meter installation program for customers that couldn't pay upfront, they paid over three years. That's a revenue source that's generating a certain amount of revenue in these first few years. And then, secondly, is actual payments for a potential arsenic project. That was part of the capital plan, and that capital plan has been rolled into our modeling and our projections. So that project is looking at being financed, but the first payment would not occur until fiscal year 18, 19. So with that revenue reduction from the repayments being completed, and with the arsenic project needing to be funded, those two items compounded, we see you have a slight deficit. With that, you would have to use reserves to make up the difference. And then, just like your personal savings, you can't continue to live off reserves without additional revenues coming in. But for this presentation purposes, we're looking at just staying revenue neutral, and the only thing that can be included historically is the CPI index. Looking at it from a financial standpoint, or from a numbers, here's the revenues that you have. You're just north of $3 million annually. And then we also looked at your expenses. But when you look at your operating expense plus your debt service, then it gives you that total expenses towards the bottom. And you'll see that in fiscal year 18, 19, and that is actually the year that you see proposed debt come online, which is right there. That is that, that is that first payment for the proposed arsenic project. Be financed over a longer term. And that arsenic project is approximately, right now, a $4 million project. So that's not something you typically will want to fund on a as-you-go basis or cash on hand. You let be an extensive amount of revenue you need to generate to fund it all by cash. Typically, you're going to want to spread that out over a number of years to ensure that not just the customers of today pay for it, but all future customers pay for it. That may come online later on, or home turnover through sales, be more equitable. Another thing we looked at was your unrestricted reserves. But for us to look at what's appropriate metrics or targets for your reserves, we break that out into two major components. The first one is the operating reserve. Typically, with operating reserve, you want to have anywhere from 16 to 90 days of liquidity on hand, so you can continue with your ongoing day-to-day operations. If a billion issue occurs, you just don't have revenues coming in, you still maintain your operations. You would see here, the, on the top part, you're meeting your minimum reserves, which is the minimum of 60 days, the max is 90. And then, as you go out to 18, 19 again, then you see a slight deficit. Not much, but it does, it's making you reduce your total operating reserve. And then the following year, it causes you to go below the 60 days, which is why it shifts up in revenue. So all in, that is 60 to 90 days. And then with capital, typically, what you want to see with the capital reserve is at least one full year's worth of capital expense. Then you have funds on hand to make sure that you don't have to reschedule your capital project due to the fact that you don't have revenue and to commit it to rewarding a contract. Usually, the industry standard is to have at least one year's worth. So we took the five years of your capital plan and looked at the average over the five years. So the target would be 1.6 million, which is right here. So, wanting you to notice that in 16, 17, your capital reserve is slightly under the 1.6 million. We're not too concerned about that, because with capital improvement plans, it's not uncommon for you to have spikes and valleys in how projects are scheduled. And that's why you would use the reserve to offset that impact, where you don't have to raise rates because your capital project increase. As long as you see that it rebounds, and the next year it does. However, over time, you're going to continue to deplete your reserve if there's no additional revenues coming on hand. And again, we're looking at just revenue neutrality. But what this is saying to me as a rate consultant is, if you don't increase rates today, over time, there will be a point in the future that you're going to look at increasing revenues that come in. Or the other option is to defer capital, but then you're really just pushing the can down the road, or kicking the can down the road.
For purposes of the arsenic project, what sort of assumptions were made? I mean, you indicated that future residents would also pay for that as well, correct?
I, just in terms of it being financed, as opposed to being funded in one year, $4 million.
Right. So what are you suggesting here, that it'll be financed on an ongoing basis?
It'll be financed over, I believe we did 20 years, over 20 years.
So there'd be a bond that we would issue?
Or more of a loan, or some type of debt.
Okay.
Interfund, transfer loan, things of that sort.
Okay. So ultimately, that debt does drop off, though?
Yeah, you, yes. It just, that shows as a repayment back to the utility, and it would drop off.
Okay.
With the financial plan, we have two options. One is the revenue neutral, which also includes just the annual CPI index I mentioned. And the second one, and this is shown mainly from your rate consultant to the city, if we're typically, we would want to solve for all five years. And we would do that in a way where we're not just increasing rate in the particular year that we needed. We need revenue in year four and five. We look at it from a metric approach. Look at very small incremental increases over the years, so it smoothes it out, and then you don't need a substantial increase in one particular year. What we would recommend is flat revenue adjustments of 3% over the CPI index. I just wanted to mention that. But again, our scope of services was to look at revenue neutrality. And for presentations, the presentation, we are looking at just updating your rates and recalibrating your rates, generating the same amount of revenue that happens today, besides just the CPI index. So, here's some of the other assumptions. I already brought up to you that the CPI index that we're using moving forward is 1.9%. Actual CPI index might vary up or down. We're also looking at growth equal to 1%. The city recently completed an updated transportation study, and in that, it showed, should be residential at a 2% growth rate, and our residential is 1%. But for us to be conservative, to make sure that you're not relying on development to occur, to make sure your utility is healthy, we're just looking at a 1% growth rate. I already mentioned the arsenic project. We assume that's being financed over 20 years. And then, we, I showed you the targets that we're looking at for operating as well as the capital reserve. And then, one other thing, this is very important. Even if we're looking at revenue neutrality, one thing that we also looked at was your current rate schedule shows flat rates, which is majority of how all your customers are charged today, and meter rates. We know that you're doing a meter conversion program right now, and if all your customers are online, are now going to be billed based on the meter rate you have in place, we modeled that. We actually took a price this time, the amount of usage that is expected, and we found that your current rate schedule would be underfunded by over $300,000. You would, you have an annual shortfall of $325,000. Those previous slides I showed you is based on how your customers are currently billed today, which is primarily flats. And if we switch it over to the meter, which is like $3 for a fixed charge and $1.22 for how much they use per unit of water, it'll be $325,000 annual loss.
That deficit associated with the metered units in the city now, not the flat rate customer, correct?
That is assuming everyone is charged the meter rate.
Right.
Customers are now charged based on their usage.
So, on an, for comparison purposes for the public, the metered rate, the new metered rate and the existing metered rate would be very close. I mean, flat rate, excuse me. Flat rate and the new estimated meter rate, average meter rate.
On average, yes. If you converted the new meter rate to be a flat rate, it would be fairly close to the meter, to the non-metered customers.
But the, but the current metered customers are going to see a fairly significant increase.
They will see a decrease based on what they're paying today. That is correct. Because essentially, they're, they're being charged less than, than what they need to be charged if everyone is charged the meter rate.
Okay.
That's correct. So besides number standpoint, sometimes it's better to see this from a graphical standpoint. So what we have here is just your operations, not include capital. And what we're showing is the bars are your expenses. The blue is your O and M. The purple is your debt payment. And you'll see that the width of the purple increases in 18, 19, for that arsenic project. And then the black is revenue above your expenses. So this is positive net cash that can then go into your reserve to fund more capital and to have liquid capital on hand. But you'll see, over time, in 18, 19, now, your expenses, your revenues are actually here. So that everybody in the annual deficit. So, and I was talking about, what we would recommend, we would, we would want to solve that. And we'll want to solve this by keeping the deficit in the first year, so then you don't see a substantial increase in year four to cover the difference. And that was, I thought it was 3% above the CPI. So that's something you could consider. So there's your operating and your capital reserve. With your operating, you'll see that it's starting to go down a little bit, slightly. It's over your 60 days, which is the red trend line. And then, in 1920, that was when we saw that number in red, where now you're under your minimum of 50 days. And then with your capital, the red trend line is your minimum reserve. And you see that your capital expenses go up and down, which is not uncommon with any utility, based on how a project is built. But you're seeing these recover, and then you go down, and then eventually, you're going to deplete your reserve to help any new revenues coming in online. So, you're very, very healthy today, right now. And the question is, do you want to, I think, before, maintain that health? But we have to take one step at a time, and we want to make sure that, one, we recalibrate the rates if you're going to start charging all your customers based on their usage, to be the right amount to come up with the same revenue as today. So let's talk about rates. Currently, most of your customers, they're also like, they're charged based on their usage. All commercial are charged based on usage. They're not common when you have flat rates, uses from their help are metered. But here are flat rates. It's just a dollar amount from us, pretty relative amount of usage. With this, you don't really have much of any type of conservation signal. Our better way to, I like to say it, is you're not providing any type of incentive for customers to use water efficiently, which is very important, especially from what the state wants to do, and how they're regulating usage and checking your numbers of your reports. And also, it doesn't give you any type of affordability for essential use to...
Let me interrupt you for a second, because if you walk away, you can't hear me. Oh, I can't project too loud. Okay. Laying around and going on. Go inside.
Habeed, just so you know, we are recording this, and we need you to be mic, even if you're away from the mic for, if not for the audience, for those that are watching or listening in later.
No problem. I feel magnified now. I need to quiet down a little bit. Okay. So, for example, for affordability, you might have some flat customers that use a very modest amount of water today, but they're getting charged almost $30 a month. When if they turn, switch over to metered, they might show that if I get charged $1.22 per unit of water, my bill would actually be maybe under $20. So that's what I mean by affordability. When you charge based on usage, you give the affordability to, for essential use. The next one is uniform rates, and this is more of the systematic approach of where you're going. So after flat rates, came uniform rates. And in uniform rates, you know, one thing, it's more equitable. It's almost like gasoline, the more you drive, the more gas you need. So in this standpoint, uniform rates, you pay the same rate, it just depends on how much you use. It's still, it does provide a little bit of affordability, because then you have a little bit more control over your particular monthly bill, how much you're going to pay. But it doesn't provide a specific amount of incentive for conservation compared to where rates are today, in terms of tiered rates and budget-based rates, which I'll go over. From there, we then had inclining tiered rates. Around 80% of all utilities in California have some type of tiered rate structure. So with tiered rates, it definitely promotes conservation, because the more water you use, the more you're going to get charged. The one thing that we have to make sure that we do, if you look at tiered rates, is that you have to layer it to be in compliance with Prop 218. And what Prop 218 wants to do is say, or I should say requires, is that whatever tier rate you have, if you have, say you have four tiers, those rates have to be based on costs. Before, there's been substantial, substantially more scrutiny with Prop 218 lately. Before, it was more economic pricing signals. Let's have tier three be twice as much as tier two. Let's have tier four be three times as much as tier one. So then you're giving a signal that's great solely based on economics. But now Prop 218 is saying, you can't do that, assets be based on actual costs. So that's something that you, it's definitely, you have the ability to do that. But from where you are today, typically, you need a lot of uses, usage history to be able to appropriately set the tiers, and to know how much revenue is going to come from those tiers, because you need to get an understanding of where your, where your uses are going to come in in relation to those tiers. From there, it, this is gaining a lot of momentum. A lot of agencies are asking us to do water budget rates. We have done the most in California. Just to give you an idea what water budget rates are, it's basically tiered rates, but specific to every single customer. So we actually look at the characteristics of one customer A versus customer B, and based on how many people live there, they get a certain water budget for indoor. And then based on how big their lot size, their lot is, they get a certain amount of water allocated to them for their outdoor needs. So then, every single customer has their own allocation. So it becomes more of a water resource management tool, which then means if state to state comes back and says, we need to cut another 20%, all you need to do is ratchet down, ratchet everyone's water budget by 20%, and everybody shares in that pain equally. So everyone has to do their share. This is something where you need even more data. So you definitely have a substantial amount of historical data of usage, and then you also need information related to lot sizes, landscape area, GIS. This is something that, if you're considering this, this is probably later down the road once you have two to three years of usage information of your metered customers.
Is that what you're saying, you need to base on that kind of people is helpful?
Yes, that's correct. Typically, you would go off of a certain default. You would say four, and then you would get appeals requests of, I have six people that live here. Some people that have two aren't going to do an appeal, but you make sure that you give enough for every single day. So with your particular rate design, you think of two things. One, the amount of revenue. And two, where you are today. It's important to know where you're coming from in terms of your rates, so we don't set up a rate structure that's just spoil a plate for everybody, because just changing the rate structure alone could cause significant impact to your customers. So the first thing we looked at, similar to looking at your financials, is your rate revenue. So currently, based on how your customers are billed, 84% of all your revenue is fixed revenue. It's predictable, it's stable, it's guaranteed revenue coming in. And 16% is based on how much water is used. And then this is your structure, your current rates. There's different dollar amounts for flat charges. And then your uniform rate, if someone's being charged based on usage, their base charge, their meter charge, is only $3 for a one-inch meter. And then they get charged a commodity rate of $1.22 per unit of water. So what we recommend, in moving forward, because everyone's converting to become metered, is just uniform rates, just one flat uniform rate, and not look at tiers today, because tiers need more information. And you want to get a handle on what is the norm of usage for your customer base. We don't, we don't know what it is. And then you layer on this drought condition, and if people are conserving based on the state mandate and just the messaging that's going on, it's moving, it's moving target right now. But one thing is, one, it's a logical step from where you are today, flat rate. Two, it would minimize rate shock when compared to tiered rates. Tiered rates would really generate some shock just by changing the rate structure. And three, it provides customers a smooth transition to build based on actual usage. And three, it provides customers a smooth transition to build based on actual usage. And one thing you can also do is shadow building based on where you are today so customers could get an idea of their impact for maybe one or two months before it goes into effect. Now with tiered rates, as I mentioned, you need a lot more historical usage and it could significantly change, cause it significantly changes certain customers that are billed at flat rates. Uh, we do recommend tiered rates, but in, in the next few years, once you have that data compiled, you can come back and look at that. Okay, so here we go. Now we're looking at how should revenue be recovered? So again, looking at where you're coming from today, I already mentioned that based on current bills, your, your, your current billing, 84% is fixed, that's due primarily to the flat customers, 60% is variable. So it's definitely very, very stable. You're not really impacted by loss in usage or drought conditions. When we look at, what if all your customers were charged your current meter scheduled rates? If everyone was on the meter rate, only 10% of your revenue would come from the fixed charge and 90% would come from variable. That's very, very volatile. So you see a 20% reduction in usage, you're, you're talking 18% loss in revenue. And looking at that, I already mentioned that you would see a revenue deficit if you just switch them to your current rate. So they have to be recalibrated. They're not the right rate to come up with the same revenue as today. But when we're looking at updating your rates, we came up with three options, and those options are, are just policy direction of having fixed revenue at 30%, variable revenue at 70, 40, 60, or 50, 50. So you'll notice that in every case, we still have a substantial amount of revenue coming from the variable component because the more you have on the variable side, the more you're providing incentive to use water efficiently. So this is where there's a little bit of a balance. You know, you want to make sure you have revenue sufficiency for the utility, but at the same time, you also want to reward customers for conserving and being efficient. So what we recommend is actually the one right in the middle of 40% fixed and 60% variable. So you still have more on the variable side, but yet you're still going to have a substantial amount of revenue coming in that's very, very stable as your base revenue. And for the remaining, uh, slides of presentation, I'm using the 40, 60 to go through the calculations. So one thing we have to do when we're looking at recovering costs, we look at your, your expenses and then we allocate them to the different buckets of these cost components. How does that cost incur? Is it water supply? Is it just delivery? Is it due to accommodating the peak demand of your customers during the hottest day of summer plus fire? Is it, is it something that is just fixed such as customer service? People call to ask questions about their bills? That's a fixed cost. Doesn't matter how much water you use. It just matters that you have an account with the city. So in going through that, we have your, your expenses, your expenses functionalized. You have two departments essentially, or two divisions of your utility, which is water plant and water distribution. And to come up with a 60, 40 split, we show you how we allocate costs. Basically personnel, because personnel is executive staff, supervisors, as well as field workers, we've been a 50, 50 split over fixed and variable. When we look at debt service, that's a payment that has to be made every single year, so we view that as a fixed cost. We don't want that to be in jeopardy in any way. Uh, any type of minor capital, those are needed improvements, so that's also a fixed cost. When we look at O and M costs for the water plants, we did that based on max day. That's, uh, just to ensure you have the appropriate amount in, in, during that time period. So this is a variable cost that is spread over usage. And then distribution, typically we see distribution, distribution lines, those are sized to accommodate max hour. So then that's also variable cost spread over usage. And then lastly, you have your cost allocation, which is the amount that the utility charged for central services of your city. And this one we played with a little bit, but we wanted a majority of that to be on the fixed side because without the central services, your operating department couldn't function. So it's, it's a, it's a needed support to even have a department. And ultimately, we come up with the 40, 60 split. For the other options of 30, 70, and the 50, 50, just to briefly give you an idea of what the changes are, for the 30, 70, where 70 is on variable, personnel gets shifted over to variable. And then for the 50, 50, personnel gets, all personnel gets shifted over to fixed. So that's, that's basically the main driver of the switch. And you could, it's not a black and white. If you looked at it black and white, what's fixed, what's variable? Every utility will have a fixed charge that recovers 80% of their cost. But then there would be no incentive to use water efficiently. So this is where that policy comes in of the balance of, of, of the messaging you're giving your customers through your rate. Okay. So looking at the fixed costs, I'm going through just how it's calculated. We take the amount that was to the customer account. We know the number of accounts of your system. We have A divided by B is C, which is 5/10. So every single account gets charged a baseline of $5.10. Then we look at your capacity costs, and then it's more equitable to spread that based on the size of the meter. The potential demand of each meter size will put on the system because your system was built to accommodate all the demand from all the meters. So from that standpoint, we look at how many equivalent one-inch meters you have in your system, and then that ends up being $8.24 per equivalent one-inch meter. So your one-inch meters get charged 5/10 plus 8.24 for a total of 13.34. And then we go to the schedule of all your other meters, one and a half inch, two inch, three inch. These are the number of meters you have of each size. Everyone, as I mentioned, gets charged 5/10. And then we use the hydraulic capacity ratios, which is from the American Water Works Association that shows how much flow can come from one-half inch meter versus a one-inch meter. So it's twice as much. So then therefore, they get charged that much more for the capacity components. Ultimately, these charges here are customer service plus capacity charge equals total meter charge. And then this is the five-year schedule. The only difference here is just the CPI index of 1.9% each year. Looking at variable charges, the one thing we have to do with variable charges is we have to get an understanding and a handle of how much usage is going to be expected that's going to get charged the meter rates. So what we did was, we had to look at your production figures. We don't have historical data of, of usage of meter consumption, so we have to look at production. But with production, you're going to have water loss in your system. Also, there's water loss due to backflow, flush out, hydrant maintenance, things of that sort where you do lose some water. So we have that a reduction of 8%. We do have metered consumption. There are some customers that are already metered, already commercial metered, so we reduce that usage to come up with the amount of what is the expected usage from your flat residential customers. But then we also have to look at what is going on today due to the drought and people conserving. So staff looked at the production figures from last year to this year and have seen a 27% drop in uses, in our production, which then means that's based on supply and demand of your customers. So we reduced this potential amount by 27%. This is most likely the amount of usage you're going to expect when you convert your flat customers over to being charged based on usage. So here are your customers with the 27% reduction to come up with total usage of 1.4 million CTF, 100 cubic feet. So these are the units that will be charged, that's $1.22 for example. Now what we do here is we have a total amount of costs that's just spread over all units of water, the way you use water, how much, how much you peak in relation to, to your average usage. It doesn't matter, it just, it's almost like that fixed charge. There's a base charge, there's a base charge for every unit of water, and that's 71 cents. However, you are, you did build the system and you do have maintenance related to accommodating peak use. For example, single family, they peak during the summer because, summer because of outdoor needs. That's when they peak. They use, their max month usage is during the summer in relation to their average use over the year. So when we look at peaking, residential uses 46, 46% more water during their max month versus their average annual usage. And then just coincidentally, non-residential is around the same. And then irrigation uses 92% more usage compared to their average use. This is not uncommon to see this number because all their usage is outdoor. So when it's really, really hot, they have a lot of demand for water. So what we do with this cost is we spread it based on these peaking factors. So you'll see that the percentages are slightly different with irrigation, irrigation getting a little bit more of the responsibility. So here's the unit rates for peak. We sum the two together, and then here is the rate for each customer class. We have residential, 71, 52, 123. It just so happened our residential ended up being the same. And then irrigation, they're a little bit more just because of that peak usage that they, that they experienced. And then again, similar to the fixed charges, here are the usage rates indexed by CPI. So you notice that your variable rate is very close to your current rate, but what we have changed is that, that shortfall, we made up through the fixed charge. So you don't have that shortfall occurring. Now let's look at customer impact. The first you want to do is separate your customers. Let's look at what's the impact to flat customers. So what we have here is your flat customer, single family, 28, 75. And we have different, three different usage examples. We have someone that uses a very efficient amount of water at eight units. They'll see a savings of almost $5. Those that use the annual average of your customers of 13 units of water, they will be almost not affected. And then those that use a substantial amount of water, they would be affected and they wouldn't see the savings because now they're getting charged based on how much water they use. So it's more equitable from that standpoint. Looking at your, your single family homes that are already metered and are charged metered rates, this is where council members champion brought up, they would see it increase because right now their rates are, are lower than what they should be if, assuming if everyone was metered. So you'll see that potentially the difference is primarily the fixed charge. Fixed charge is going up. Fixed charge is going up. So you'll see an increase of $9 mainly because of that fixed charge. Because again, the variable rate is almost the same, 122 versus 123, subhenny.
So the 12, 73, is that what our average for the single user customer?
Uh, your average is 13. This is showing what if you, what if you have a low, a low use user.
So our average metered customer is currently?
13. It's about, no, it's about 18, 83.
Oh, okay.
Even though your flat customers are at 28.
So they take a chance to lower than our flat customers?
Correct. And it's mainly because of that fixed charge being so low at $3. And then remember, if I extrapolate that out, that means that fixed charge is only generating 10% of your revenue. So that's really what's being recalibrated. And then we wanted to show just the difference in the split between fixed and variable. You'll notice that, you know, the, the rate between the red is fixed, the blue is variable, that you see slight changes, 50, 50, 15, 79. But overall, this is based on 13 units of water. It's still pretty close to being relatively the same in, in total. It just depends on how much revenue you want as a stable amount as your base. And then one thing that was also requested was look at surrounding neighbors, neighboring agencies, excuse me. Here is the proposed rate. Here is Lowdy, they're actually at almost $50. We have Elk Grove Waterworks, they're almost at 80. Sacramento County, Zone 41 is 32. And then Sacramento County, Cal, Calamity Water is at 65. So you're still on the low end of your, of your neighbors. And that can be primarily due to the fact that you're all groundwater. Now some of these agencies actually have imported water costs.
And Habib, if I could just insert, as you can see stated, I just want to emphasize it for the audience and for council, this is looking at the typical one-inch residential customer at an average usage. Obviously, the high usage will be more, the low usage will be less. But for our average customer on a one-inch meter, this is what they'd be looking at relative to other agencies around us.
Yes, thank you. So in terms of policy direction, what we're looking for today to update, revise, finalize these rates and bring it back to you is, one, revenue neutral, but we are including the CPI index for future years. Two, the arson project, there is a $4 million debt that we're assuming that would then have a first payment occur in 1819. Reserve target, 60, 90 days and CIP reserve average of your annual, annual CIP costs. That's ready for metrics to see how your utility is doing, how healthy your utility is. Fixed variable split, 30, 70, 40, 60, 50, 50. We're, whoops, we're recommending the 40, 60 for today. And then also, here's an important one that I didn't really touch on too much, but based on the usage characteristics, I showed you how much irrigation peaks should we have break out customer classes. Currently, your $1.22 is charged against all customers. There's not a breakout between grouping customers by their usage characteristics. And what we showed was, let's group them based on their usage characteristics, single family, commercial, irrigation, and you clearly see that irrigation would get charged at slightly higher rates.
Habib, let me just insert a clarification again for the audience as well as council members. When we talk about irrigation, obviously a residence has both. They have inside use and outside. Our residential rate, that's bundled up as an average assumption and consumption. When we talk about irrigation in the context of a rate class, we're talking about those people that have a separate irrigation meter, primarily commercial that a shopping center would have their usage indoors, but they'd also have a separate meter for their landscaping out front, schools, parks, churches, large irrigated areas typically, because our commercial rates are based on the water used also drives their sewer rate. They say, well, I don't want to pay sewer rates on my irrigation because it's not going down the sewer. So they have the option to pay for and install a separate irrigation meter, and that's the rate class we're talking about. Those people that are strictly 100% irrigation on a separate meter, that would be that proposal.
That's correct. Yes, thank you, Stephen.
Along that, kind of along that, on the, we talked, and we focused mainly just on the, the one-inch and less diameter meters. What is the change in the rate, if any, or a comparison on the larger meters? I mean, you know, we have a number. I mean, it's less than a couple hundred, but they go up to five or six inch. Is there much of a change in that?
Uh, yes, there's quite a bit of a change. Your current monthly fixed charges are very, very low compared to where it is. Uh, because remember, only 10% of your revenue is being generated by that. And that's what we're comparing to, and that has to be adjusted upwards. I showed it on one of the slides, but I didn't, I don't have what the...
That was just with the single family though, right?
Well, when we're looking at the meter, the meter charge?
Yes.
The, the type of customer is irrelevant because we're just only looking at the size of the meter. It's blind to customer class.
Okay. So the fixed rate charge for say a four inch is going to be $108?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then you'd have the commodity charge on top of that?
Yes, that's correct.
And do we know comparison, well, it's going to be a fairly significant increase there?
Yes.
So those, so those people with the largest impact, are those commercial?
What are they being charged flat rate now?
Um, if they're flat, then it's a...
Well, not that, well, what are the new charges of base rate?
Yeah, I'll have to look up their, your meter charges, but they get charged $1.22 for their usage, and then their meter charge is well less than $108 for the four inch.
Yeah. Just for thinking purposes, we do, and in the final reports and what we bring back, we'll have charts showing all of that, but we kind of don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole. the rabbit hole until we are in agreement that we want, how do we want the split between variable and fixed, and are we conceptually on the right track here as far as council...
Yeah, we...
So those three kinds, that have bigger than a one-inch pipe, are going to, yeah, like a stand?
Well, it'll be similar to what our current metered rate customers, where we're taking them from three dollars, and in our forty-sixty recommendation, we take them up to about thirteen as part of the fixed. So that's about a three or four-time increase in the flat portion or the fixed portion of their bill. A similar ratio would go on with our, with our commercial meters, the larger meters. But again, as you raise that, you're going to be lowering the amount they're charged for their usage. So if they're a high user, they might see a benefit. If they're a real low user, they would probably see their rates go up relatively. And we can, no two commercial customers are alike. You have large manufacturing, Cardinal Glass, and you have very large warehouses that have very little water usage. I think L&amp;L Wood Products fit into that. They don't use any water to produce their product. They're more of a warehousing and dry production, but, so they've got boy bathrooms.
So one of the documents that you received was also the executive summary from Rapela, and on page three, it shows you your current monthly meter charge on five-meter size, and then on page ten, it shows what's on the PowerPoint on the slide here of the proposed. So that would be the difference between the two.
So I'm reading this right, so if it's currently, like, for the fixed rate, so if it's currently forty-two sixteen, it'll go up to nineteen, to two-hundred-and-nineteen?
Yes, that's correct. And keep in mind, where you are today is, it would have been better, like, they would have been charged more appropriately, like, on the flat rate compared to getting reduced rates before being metered.
Steve, I'm wondering, who, what kind of retail people or what kind of businesses are going to be affected by those larger size types? For example, a restaurant maybe would have what, five feet?
Yeah, their use drives how much water they need, and that drives what size meter. And as they proportionally use more water, they're going to pay more, and that's the equitability that we're trying to establish. Yeah, typical restaurant in town is probably a two-inch meter, maybe even smaller. A Cardinal Glass, they have fire systems onsite and other things, so they have a big demand hit on our system to be able to produce their fire protection needs in addition to their actual consumption. And so there's a capacity fee that gets built into this, and that's why these larger meters pay quite a bit more because we have to be ready to provide that kind of demand at any given time.
I was just more concerned about the small business.
Small businesses, most of them are going to be on one- or one-and-a-half-inch meters. If they're part of a complex of, you know, strip businesses, they might be on a joint two-inch meter. If they're a car wash, they might be on a little larger meter.
So if you wanted to mitigate this as much as possible, you would have to go to a point where you're looking at ten percent from fixed, from the utility as a whole, and ninety percent from variable. Because even if you go ten percent, even the, just the current differences between the meter size is really, really small compared to industry standards. So even if we stay, maintained it at the same ten percent that is being recovered today, we would still see increases in the larger size of meters. But then this is where that policy comes in of the balance between, you know, what's the, and an impact to individual customers and also the revenue stability of the utility because ultimately, if you, if you're volatile, then you're going to be increasing rates and kind of running around trying to catch your tail because you're always reacting to changes in behavior.
So Habib, would it be fair to say, based on what you just represented, that currently, as of this rate study, it would appear that our commercial customers are not under Prop two-eighteen, that their rates need to be adjusted upwards on their meter rates?
Yes, I would concur with that. Another way to show that is, from this standpoint, we have four-hundred-and-forty-thousand being recovered through a base fee. Meter size doesn't matter. So really, only eight-hundred-thousand dollars is being spread over the size of the meter out of a three-point-three-million-dollar enterprise. So it's a fairly small amount, and yet that's still generated a decent amount of difference between the size of each meter. So the only way you could adjust that as well is by moving more of the capital cost to, on a per-account basis, but then, then it becomes, or now it's also not affordable to those that use very small amount of water. So I would recommend to definitely update the meter charge by meter size to some extent to be more in line with what we've seen based on the demand those meters put on the system. But this is why we want to get direction and why we have it as a workshop, and I think Marco is going to have one slide to go through the final summary, and then we can still, you know, take questions, and I'll be up here if you have any more.
It's been a long presentation, but just really quick, we have a certain amount of room that we need to continue towards this. Whether a person's using a gallon of water or having to get on the water, we still have monitoring the remaining employee costs, everything associated with that. With the rate design, we look at a variety of rate designs, we look at what our current system is with the proposed system. As you guys were talking here about meters, that's cost of service. If we went back, and we did it ten-ninety, you know, we were giving direction to do it ten-ninety, we'd still have to go back and look at those meters and do cost service allocation. We have to follow Prop two-eighteen guidelines. They will not see those low numbers again. That just won't happen. If we go in here and adjust these rates, we have to follow the regulatory and legal requirements. We've seen customer impact. I really like, this one right here. Yeah, intentionally, we asked them not to look at this until the end of this process, until we actually had the executive summary drafted, we had a lot of things. Because I wanted to keep a blind eye, I didn't want to see what was out. When I saw that we were so low there, I thought, man, we could double our staff. Hitting. We really have a good, I feel that we have a good product here. We've followed the Prop two-eighteen, and we need a little bit of guidance at this point before we come down. Questions for anybody?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you're finished, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Rick Walters.
I have this draft here, so I'm just going to read it out. Does an addition to this year, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, the cost of experience of revenue deficient, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars? And you tell me dollar amount, what that would be, to be revenue, to make that three-twenty, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of? Well, the answer is three dollars and seventy-six cents to be revenue neutral. So I'm a little confused as to how you get to thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents of the fixed rate. Number one. Stay with me for a second. Okay, it is recommended that the city increase revenues by an additional three percent over the CPI. CPI is figured to be?
One-point-nine.
One-point-nine, so that would be a four-point-nine, three-five percent increase every year. That's, that's pretty, pretty big. And we don't know if that cost, that CPI is going to go up. It might go up four or five percent. Asking, that'd be a seven percent. You don't want to do that. Now, metered consumption data, can you tell me what, I'm sort of claiming that about three-hundred, the average use is three-hundred gallons a day, is that, am I correct? That's thirteen CCFs? That's nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty gallons a month. Am I correct?
Right, you're right, you're around ten thousand.
Ten thousand a month. So you're raising your fixed costs way up for people that use, say, ten-thousand gallons, and in addition to that, people that use three-thousand gallons are still paying the same fixed cost. That's not fair. That's the other point I have to make. It says, in addition to having fifty percent of the cost covered through variable charges, we'll promote efficient water use by giving customers more control. We want more control. That means twenty percent or less fixed, and the rest in consumption. That way, we control how much water we use. I'm just talking about residential, not talking about commercial or anything like Then we're getting to the big elephant in the room, which is the cost allocation plan, which is five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars, that you take out of the water. You take that, that out of the water fund, and you put it in the general fund. When it gets in the general fund, you don't know what it's being used for. It may not be used for water. And that cost, if I'm looking at it correctly, keeps going up every year, almost over six-hundred-thousand in four years. According to Prop two-eighteen, you can't do that. You can't take that money out of that water fund. If you left that five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars in the fund, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. The other point is that we're charging a dollar twenty-seven cents for seven-hundred-and-forty dollars, and I never thought I would say this, but that's awful cheap. If you went to two dollars, raised the fixed charge from three to six, raised the consumption charge to two dollars, it would solve your problems. This residential amount, not talking about commercial or any other. So this, one that you want to do is, if you go through with this, or you think this, that's thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents for the fixed charge, that's a three-hundred-and-sixty-five percent increase. Regardless of whether we're on the meter or not, it's going to be an increase. You have to take all this into consideration. You can move those numbers any way you want, just give, give them the numbers that you're looking at.
Mr. Walters will have to wrap it up.
I didn't know we were on time.
Thank you. Jim Claussen.
My name is Jim Claussen. I'm going to start with a question I've asked Mr. Camby before. When you have a special meeting like this where we can discuss water and you invite the public, why do you do it at four-thirty?
I didn't set the meeting...
Most of the, most of the, most of the public don't get off till five, five-thirty. If one person here had to take off work half hour early, just to hunger, because she would, you know, if it's for your convenience, have it on another night. Let's have it, let's have it on a time that it would be available for everyone, maybe at six o'clock. If it's four-thirty, might as well have it at two-thirty, yeah. Okay, my second, my second point, Mr. Walters, we have a lot of good points. What I want to ask about is, every time we turn around, now we're going to thirteen dollars here, five percent here, people who are retired, people, especially people on low income, only have so much money. They keep it in their pocket so they can afford to try and live. Every time we turn around, the government agencies might put their hand in, just for another, another dime, every time you turn around. The people who don't elect the Jew, watch our, watch for our egg pieces, so they don't have, our seniors don't have to spend this aside to a, I have to pay my water bills so I won't buy out my prescriptions. Money getting, getting tight. Those who are living on those tight incomes, don't have any extra money coming in. So I ask you to take a look at it very, very seriously, and only do minimal. We need to be able to get by, and not just, I dream and I wish and just have a grand plan. Sometimes that just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dan Jimenez?
And I echo Jim's comment about the time that there's workshops. It could have been a little bit more people, frankly, really. This is what it is. I've got a couple of questions. Rick asked a lot of questions I was going to ask, so mine won't be very long. On the table of inflation factor assumptions, that's one-point-one, you didn't show that on your presentation, that key factors, general salaries, benefits, emergency, capital, so on. On the first column, two thousand and sixteen, there's no information available. It says N A, not available. So you move on to the right on two thousand and seventeen, there's three percent for general salaries, goes up two percent, benefits go up twelve percent, so on and so forth. My real question is, how did you get to two thousand and seventeen without any numbers on two thousand and sixteen? I mean, what got you from, not available, it puts me in a horrible situation.
I can answer that really quickly. What it does is we just use the existing budget that has been approved by council. So we didn't escalate anything for this year, because two thousand and sixteen means two fifteen, two sixteen budget. So that's this budget that we're currently on right now, that's why it's not applicable. That's right. Not, not, not available, not applicable, because we are using the existing budget that was adopted by the council.
Yeah, table one-point-one is future inflation factors. Well, there is no inflation factor on the current year.
So it's inflation factors?
Well, inflation factors...
This is show report, so I just went first.
All right. Well, Mr. Jimenez, the inflation factors get applied annually, and you don't apply one to the current year, you apply it to a future year.
Okay. The other thing too is that using that three percent over that one-point-nine, you know, estimated CPI percentage, you know, like, what's that? But that's if the CPI goes to five and six, and then you throw in the three percent on top of that. That's pretty high, so you have to really look at that, think about it if you really want to pass that. The other thing, and I'm sorry the presenter, I forgot her name, but you kept using the term, use water deficient. Seems to be, if you want the folks to use the water deficient, you would then lower your fixed cost, put it more on the usage that people are... your fixed costs, put it more on the usage that people are using. That way everybody's paying their fair share. That's my point on that. Um, again, um, that 46D that's recommending, yeah, I understand that you want to make sure the city gets all the revenue that, that it wants to get and should get under Prop 218. There's other percentages you can use to be, to accomplish your goal and to be a little bit more people friendly. So I hope you deviate from the past and, and not just vote because it's there, but really think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'll move on to council questions, comments.
I have some questions.
Barbara.
Um, this is just a concern I have for those people that had to pay for the installation of their meter and so they're paying that cost as well as the new rate. Have you looked at how that's going to impact those people?
From a rate study analysis, the, the revenue is in there. It's offsetting current debt service that the city's incurred to put in the meters. Um, and so, yes, those people that are paying it over a three-year period, that would be typical person, be additional $10 a month. On top of this, that will drop off after three years. Many people paid it upfront. Others have previously paid a deposit. So this rate structure doesn't take that into consideration as part of the rate, uh, but it certainly affects those customers that chose the payment plan.
Can you explain to me, um, say for the seniors that are using less water? Maybe there's just one or two in the household. The fixed cost is that, how is that, um, being fair? I guess I'm trying to say.
Well, that's an excellent question and Mark can elaborate further, but maybe just from a, sort of a thumbnail perspective, uh, if you think about it, it's a little bit like your household costs, is you have a mortgage payment, whether you feed the kids or not, whether you have college tuition or not, whether you, you have certain fixed costs. And then you make decisions about whether you're going to go out to eat or whether you're going to eat at home or whether you're going to entertain or whether you're going to go on vacation. Those are sort of your variable costs. In this case, we have to pay the bills and there are, 80% of our costs are truly fixed. Okay? We have to, um, have fire flow demand whether it gets used or not. We have to do testing whether our customer uses any water or not to give them safe water. And so we're trying to balance how much, and part of the decision and input we're going to need from council is, is 60/40 the right percentage of fixed versus variable, um, 40/60 and the, and the way I said it. Or should it be lower? 30%? It's a little riskier as people conserve. We still have to cover our fixed costs, which means we have to charge more for the commodity rate. Um, or should we be moving more towards where we are today, which is a safe fixed base at 84% being fixed, um, and, and less impact, uh, on the variable rate users? And that is a great question is how about the, the lower users? There's concern with fixed income and we get it. Under the proposal, people who use less water and get it and conserve or have small one or two-person fixed income family and a senior center perhaps, that sort of thing, uh, or a, a smaller home that doesn't have much outdoor irrigation, they stand to benefit under this rate structure. Any one of the three, 30/70, 40/60, 50/50. Those people will save money over our current average customer. Those people who are using more than the average customer will see the major impacts. Today, in a flat rate, they get no credit for using less water. Under the proposal, any one of them, they stand to be able to save money because they can control their costs.
I have a couple of things to add. It's unfortunate that we have the rate structure that we do right now with a small amount of people around, you know, less than a thousand who are on, about 500 or so residential. And then we have another 6,200 that are paying a flat fixed fee right now. It's unfortunate that they look over there at $3 and say, we're going to be paying that before you know it. Well, as we look at the whole rate structure, even if, if we were directed to go back to 10/90, that $3 isn't going to exist, you know, because we have to take into allocations like what we have here in front of you on, on this, uh, we have fixed costs. And if we're going to throw all of our water plant personnel into variable, that's, that would mean that we could send them home when we use water and then we bring them back when we lose more water or use more. It, it's not feasible. We have to have the same amount of people because we have six water plants and they all have to be running and they all have to be maintained and such. And, and though the variable rate, when you look at it, there's really a small component in this variable. Our 84/16 right now, that's what we have in our rate. Everything combined is an 84/16. To go to, I mean, that, that's, that's a dream of the facilities, man. And I knew it was wrong and that's why we proposed rates three and a half years ago. We started moving that direction because we weren't able to help the people who now only have one or two citizens living in. We weren't able to help the affordability or help with water conservation. So when we're putting the 40/60 here, the council could choose 30/70, could choose 10/90. But remember, we're going from an 84/16 right now to whatever we choose, we go over, whatever we choose becomes more and more risk on having problems with maintaining not just our revenues, but not having to come back every year to make adjustments.
But I also think you need to look too. When you look at consumption, you know, the average household in Galt is about three, two, three, three persons. It's not one and two people. So to, 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 to load the variable rate, um, I, I, I feel more comfortable increasing the, the fixed rate because it, it does two things. One, I think it provides, uh, a better projection of revenue for the city. It's more stable because half of your revenue you know is fixed. The other, you can work on and, and have a pretty good idea of what it's going to be in the future. Secondly, I think it's equitable to the public, the user. Like you said, a one and two family, I don't know, I think, Rick, you said 3,000 units is, or 3,000 units of water is what you use on a monthly basis. If I looked at this correctly, under these rates, you'd be paying about $17, I think, because that would be using the 1.23, um, factor, um, times three units is going to give you about a little over, uh, three and a half dollars plus the base rate, uh, which is 13/34. So you're looking around 17, $18 maximum. So that's a $10 reduction right there.
I support what you're saying because I support that. It's that, somebody's messing with a finger over there. When we're looking at 6,200 customers coming on.
Correct.
Not the 500. The 500 are going to be an increase. That is, that is a given. No matter what system we choose, you're going to see.
Mark, this camera, is it almost frustrating that our flat rate customers have been discussing that, I mean, the meter rate that we've been having? I mean, it looks to me like our meter rate is business real low as compared to what our flat rate customers were paying.
Two months ago, I wouldn't have been able to answer that today. Yes, absolutely. It's what we.
He, him, but I.
Just let me finish this, this guy here with, with Councilman Campion there. It's that we're going to see about 3,000, 3,000 customers are going to see a decrease in their flat rate. That's what we're going to see. Thousands of people having a lower rate. There's going to be thousands of the same amount that have a little higher rate.
Right.
They can control.
Right.
And you're going to see instantly 3,000 customers or more, 3,500 are going to see a drop in their rate. We're not asking for more revenue, you know? And I did want to make a comment on the 3%. We're not asking for that right now. Um, the, the consultant recommended it because they like to take care of things in five-year increments because of the drought, because of new meters going in, because of, we're still working out what the budget's going to be for the arsenic project. Still have to come back to you on that. Those are variables that are going to probably wash out next year. That's when we should come back. Not that this is any, but it's just, we don't recommend we look out five years. I, I need to do something.
Yeah. Let me just to share, you know, the rest of my thoughts. I know we're not making decisions tonight, but I, I firmly believe that a 50/50 approach is, is better. I think that if we're going to set a rate, um, and we're going to try and establish what the CPI is, for the, for the time period by, by, by which the, um, rates are imposed, that whatever the CPI is, it should be fixed. If we're saying it's 1.9 today, it should be 1.9 next year, 1.9 until we make a change and not let it float. Because the numbers are here that show what is necessary in order to, to achieve not only revenue neutrality, but to meet the needs for the capital expenses such as the arsenic project, which is estimated at $4 million today. We don't know if it's going to be 4 million, could be less. I think originally it was budgeted much less, but, uh, it, it looks like the design costs are going to be more. So at the same time, I, I, I don't know that we're going to be looking at a 3% adjustment for simply revenue factors. I would recommend or think about something closer to a 2%. So we're looking at a total of 4% in subsequent years until we come back. I'd rather be more conservative on this side in the short term, knowing that we may have to increase those in the long run, but we don't know what those numbers are or what those costs are. And they may, they may be lower. We don't know. And we don't know what, how the public's going to respond to this in terms of what the total revenue is going to be available, uh, from the customer base. It could be higher. It could be lower.
Doesn't the rate increase for the, for the, have to come back to us every year anyway? I mean, can we fix?
Under, under our current rate structure, we, as part of the Prop 218 protest process that was done in 2012, just before I got here, it was a CPI adjustment was approved and it varies every year. Some years it's zero, other years it's 3%. Uh, on average, in the last couple of years, it's been about 1.9 and been a very slow economy. During times of inflation, you'll see that number jump up. To fix it, may overcharge customers or in times of significant inflation, it may cripple our ability to meet, as our, if our costs go up 10%, we have no way to recover that. So you can be safe and pick a number, but you're really sort of rolling the dice on whether you're going to be right or not.
I, I don't see this going past two years because it was like Mr. Clarkson was saying. We're going to be back here to reevaluate this within the next, hopefully, two years and I would, you know, I would hope so. Um, and secondly, because you've got this, at least one large capital project that, that is unknown in terms of cost, we have an estimate of $4 million, that may or may not be it. So I'm feeling, I feel that, I don't know that it's necessary to do what we're planning now or what is proposed because I don't know that that amount of revenue is necessary in the short term. And I, that's just my feeling.
Yeah. I would absolutely agree with that. I didn't mean to cut you off there, Steve.
But to answer, uh, Councilmember Hughes' question, you can establish rates for a five-year period of time?
You could have a formula for, or an escalator percentage tied, tied to some rate structure, no more than five years. And Mr. Campion, I certainly agree that I think we've got too many variables to be looking at that plus 3% now. We're recommending we not do that, that we just do the, sort of the rate calibration at this time and come back and look at this in a couple of years and see if, if we're looking good. By then we'll have better cost estimates on the arsenic. And by the way, the arsenic, uh, is related to, or can be related to what we're doing at the sewer plant because that's where the problem is.
Well, that's, that was going to go next.
The water system is dumping, dumping the arsenic into the sewer plant. And so we have the ability, uh, depending on what your guidance would be, we're going to be bringing back the wastewater financing plan and there are some options in there that could actually develop a, a funding option for an internal loan, uh, using the existing, uh, loan that's already available to the city for the wastewater plant. And, uh, we'll be bringing back some options for you and discussing pros and cons of looking at that as a way to not have to get yet another loan. We could do an internal.
I guess it wasn't clear to me because there were two. I mean, it said clearly in the staff report or in the executive summary, staff looked at revenue neutrality. However, the consultant brought up a longer term, higher cost to address long-term needs, which is, you know, appropriate so that council understands. I didn't understand that it was staff's recommendation to just go revenue neutral. Does that include the CPI or not?
Our recommendation, we have the CPI, it's approved on our current rates. That sort of, you know, gives fairness to if our costs go up, then, then that same amount is passed through to the customers. If our costs go down, they benefit from that as well. Um, and so our recommendation would be that we do the, one of the three or different variation on the percentage between fixed, but that it's revenue neutral at this time, that we match our current revenue prior to migrating another 6,000 customers to metered rates and not apply the 3% at this time, but that we do protect. Our recommendation would be to keep the, the CPI adjustment in at this time.
So is my understanding that that CPI adjustment was approved in 2012?
Yes, and it has two more years.
Five years?
Yes.
So it's good until 2015? So regardless, we're going to have to come back in 2015 to look at that?
Well, two ways to get there. One is yes.
Or it could be like now.
Either lose it or revisit it in two years. Another option would be to, as part of the current, anything we do to change our rate structure will require a Prop 218 hearing and notices, 45-day notices going out to every customer and every property owner within the city limits, uh, explaining this and making our reports available and giving them an opportunity to come and be heard by council. And no matter what rate structure, if it's different than today or it's an increase from today, we need to go through that process. So there's a whole public hearing process ahead of us. What we need is.
That's good for five years.
Yeah. What we're seeking direction on is how you want to split the fixed and variable. Are you okay with the general assumptions we've made? Do you want to do the 3% now? We're recommending no, uh, that we not do that. Long story short, we could also reset the five-year clock with this current pending Prop 218 process to give us up to five more years without having to do anything with our rates other than protect against inflation. Our recommendation is we look at the data in a couple of years and if we need to make an adjustment, we can. Uh, if we did a five-year extension at this time on the CPI adjustment, if we don't need it, we're good. So a couple of different options there.
Good question for you in regards to what Councilmember Campion brought up. I know currently you're recommending the, the 40/60, but at the same time, you're telling me that you want to remain revenue neutral. Going to the 50/50, would that allow us to remain revenue neutral or would it push us towards the positive end?
All of the study options that are presented are revenue neutral. We, if you, if you lower the fixed amount, then you're going to put more cost into the commodity rate. And so as you see this chart, your average customer is going to pay the same, doesn't matter which scenario you pick. It's sort of how much risk on, on, as the usage changes, how much volatility are we going to have, uh, in our, in our variable costs? And, uh, we would, we've modeled what our costs will be in the future and any one of these options would give us an estimated revenue neutrality. It just impacts customers differently.
So I guess I don't know why you recommend it to 64 over the 50/60. Does, because, does it encourage more conservation or?
It's, it's, it's a great, great question and it's not science at this point. At some point you're trying to balance, you've got a large percentage of your costs that are fixed and you want to be fair to the customers and share that evenly, but we also want to send a conservation message. So we don't want 80% fixed like we are today. So we're recommending that we cut the fixed percentage over today's, uh, rate structure from 84% on average down to 40% and then that applies the incentive to the rest. And, uh, in any of these scenarios, we try to be equitable to each customer class. It's, uh, you know, there's no Prop 218 mandate for where you put your fix in your variable costs, uh, but we're trying to balance, uh, sending an incentive to conserve message, same to uncovering the city's fixed costs.
So that's the recommendation, but staff is comfortable on any of the three options, right?
We are, the more comfortable, the more fixed. 37, 84/16 is a big.
That's a big jump.
It is. Even 40-60 is a big jump. When we looked at this, when we went to 40-60, it just kind of developed because we saw that, that it would provide about the commodity rate as well. That some customers are new. When you go to the 50-50, the commodity drops a little bit. And you might have some people say, well, you know, maybe a thousand gallons a month would cost me a...
How many people even, how many people even monitor their meter? They're going to get out there and, they get a bill once a month, and they pay whatever that bill is. I mean, I don't...
So, if you increase the fix, going to the 50-30, you're saying the commodity cost comes down?
Slightly.
To maintain revenue neutrality.
Right.
We're trying to collect a certain amount of money needed to run the water system.
Collecting, okay. So, if you went to the 30-70 and you lowered the fixed rate, the commodity rate isn't as bad?
Yes.
Yes.
And, you know, if you're asking my opinion, 80-20, you're ready to go. If you look at some of the other agencies around us...
And that's what I was going to add.
They are in that 60 to 80 fixed range.
Really?
That's where they're at. Right here. That's where they're at. They're, you know, except for the Zone 41 Sacramento County, everybody else is, is in the 50-plus range.
Really?
For fixed.
Now, this slide...
That's what the darker color is right there?
That's the fixed.
Dark color is fixed.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. So, 40-60 is below.
Lodi's got to be 70%.
You see it right there? So, it's, most of them are going for a higher fixed.
Well, I can see it provides predictability to the city. It provides predictability to the resident because you have less variable on the consumption side.
I want to add, I concur affirm that our target was to keep the commodity rate where it's at, which customers are used to, but then in terms of that shortfall I was talking about, and that's recalibrate the fix size because it would fit the agency, the utility as well. As well as, I would say, the customers with rate stability. Now, you don't have to affect increased rates when something changes. And a second thing is, we're still trying to, you're going to still have to determine and monitor where is usage going to land? Because you haven't been charging your customers meter rates. That's a very important as well.
Yeah, because if your commodity really drops, if it goes in the tank, and if your fixed is too low, you're back looking at rate adjustments.
Right, then you come back, your customers say you did a great job, and we were a little bit correct, and we have to...
Now, have to raise your rates. That's what you always want to do.
That's what I mean by, that's what I mean by rate stability, by having a decent amount coming from your fix charge. You don't have to, whether it was foreign, you're off a little bit where you think the usage is going to land.
Can I ask a question please?
Mr. Walters, come on in.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I have a brief commercial message.
Sure.
Mr. Walters is coming up. So, we do have a closed session tonight. It's probably going to take us about 45, 50 minutes. I think we should continue on with the discussion here tonight. But if we go beyond, much beyond 610, we'll probably have to move the closed session to the back end of the meeting. I think we have a pretty short meeting, and I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Are you okay with that? Sure, counsel?
All right.
Just one question. Why are we on the high side on the fixed? Why even have water meters? What's the advantage of going to water meters? Can anybody tell me that? What's the advantage?
Because the state said we had to do it.
Well, no, no, you have to put water meters.
Right.
What is the advantage? Not understanding what...
So, do you come up with a uniform rate? And everybody pays a uniform rate?
No, it's got nothing to do with uniform rate. What's the advantage?
I think the advantage of people like yourself who have been really conservative and have served water, you are going to pay less.
Well, I understand.
Customers who are using more, I mean, that's where the state went. I mean, that's why they did it. Went so that communities that use a lot of water, we're going to pay more for it. Communities that use less are going to pay less.
I understand, but the higher that fixed rate means that you're going to, you're going to get to a higher rate on the fixed rates because you're higher down the road. If you're lower, it takes a longer point in time. Your consumption, everybody talks about the fixed rate is... I just don't understand the definition of where you're trying to, all these fixed rates at. Where all these fixed rates come from? It's just amazing to me that...
The fixed rates, Rick, the states are our fixed costs. I mean, they looked at what our fixed costs are and said, you know, because those costs aren't going to change regardless of how much water one individual uses or doesn't use, those fixed rates are what they...
Okay. We need to cover the fixed rate because we need to not jeopardize. Are you going to, are you going to think about keeping that $500,000 in the water fund? Are you even going to consider that? That's my question. Are you just going to have that?
No, I think the whole cost allocation plan is really another discussion. Because that's what it comes down to, Rick. It's not just the water fund or just the sewer fund. It's the whole cost allocation plan.
Well, I'm just specifically talking about the water. I'm not talking about the other 39 reductions that you take out for the cost allocation plan. I'm just talking about the water. This is an important thing to the citizens. That $500,000. I just, I just want to know, if you're going to consider it or you're just going to blow it off? Are you going to consider it?
No, not at the time. Because, I mean, I guess, Rick, that $500,000, we're looking at rate structure. We're not looking at that. For myself, no, not at the time.
Okay, do we have any recommendations from council? Do we want to continue the discussion?
When this comes back to us, and that is... Was that going to be November? Is that the next time we'll see this?
We're currently having our outlook to bring it back to the first meeting in November. That basically gives us whatever direction we get tonight as to a split on fixed versus variable or other input on any of our assumptions. Then, we'll bring back a final rate recommendation and finalize the report, bring the report back for adoption, which will include that preferred rate option for final endorsement. That then would give us the basis upon which to issue 45-day notices under Prop 218 as to a proposed rate and all the details and charts about how we got to that. Since we do have the ability to pick an option here, we're more comfortable with higher fixed. Mr. Walters wants to go the other direction. It's your discretion as to how safe or how volatile you want your rate structure to be and how often we bring it back. Sort of goes into those underlying assumptions. So, we're here to seek a consensus direction from council as to, do you have a preference or direction for, we want you to look at this before you bring it back so that we can bring it, give us a couple of weeks to adjust it and get it re-agendized for November 3rd.
And that's when we have to make our final decision?
If you wish to stick to rolling out your mock bills based on a proposal and not delay that so we're, first real bills are hitting in the heat of summer next year, we'd recommend that you transition during the cooler months.
I know it would be hard to turn around between now and then, but the only other, I think, information that I would like to see is a little bit more, because I tend to think that we should be looking at a higher fixed rate. And I'm not so convinced that 50% is the correct number at this point. I wouldn't, I don't know if it's possible at the next meeting. I know that's a big turnaround to have maybe a little additional information about what the actuals are. I mean, I saw the bar chart and got some conceptual idea. Unless council's comfortable, I mean...
Mr. Clarkson, you have a question?
Yeah, I have one question. You're talking about pulling out the bills. I was, when we got our meter, I was definitely trying to figure out how to read it. So, I went to the public works and asked him if he had a handout. He didn't. Have one yet?
We do have instructions on how to read your meter. We're getting ready to put those...
And you're going to be sending that out in the next bill. So, let me, let me get to see what we're being charged and what it looks like. Actually go look and see how to read the meter.
Your October bills will be mailed within the week. It will not go in that bill. I hope prior to your next bill to have it available online. We can give you that information today on how to read your meter.
A lot of the customers have a chance to, when you download it. Well, lots of people now have computers, actually have that available someplace. So, you can pick up a handout that shows how to read your meter. And we're all going to need it.
We intend to distribute that information. We're waiting for one last piece to fall into place, and then, we're going to send out to customers not only how to read your meter, but your new meter, but also how, if you want to go online and look at your usage on an hourly, daily, weekly, or monthly basis, how you can do that. And we're waiting, we're fine-tuning our customer portal at the moment.
I'm just, I'm going to give this part of my list as well, but thank you.
I tend to be comfortable with the 60-40.
Are you saying, yeah?
With the, what was the staff's recommendation?
60-40 or 40?
Got to check where you put that.
I tend to be comfortable with the staff's recommendation. I think, you know, we take some risks.
No, that wasn't staff's recommendation. That was the consultant's recommendation.
Okay.
If you listen to what staff said, he said the higher fixed rate is what they would be comfortable with.
We do have, excuse me, but we have a 50-50 that we can show you. We had it in the, it's hidden in the PowerPoint. We did have that in the morning to see how that affects things. So, this is the 50-50 with the option three. This is what your current customers, your existing meter, what they would pay, or what they have currently and what would be proposed. And again, it's just that base that really changes. The commodity changes a little bit. But the increase, the increase only really starts, or starts closing to more water they use.
That's based on a one-inch, but what about your commercial customers?
The commercial customers are going to be, you go to 50-50, you're going to see a increase based on their meter units. Right now, they have an increase like the six-inch, I think, is, you know, less than $100 and...
Do you feel comfortable with the 40-60?
For two years, as long as I'm not banned.
Especially with the variable, I just don't, I see that as more of a risk for two reasons. One, having to come back and adjust the rate. And secondly, it doesn't provide any rate stability. I mean, or less assurance of what the revenue stability is going to be. I mean, I, and I think to the customer. It doesn't give them, you've got, you know, 60% of their bill not knowing what it's going to be. The higher you can predict what their bill is, the less variable they have.
But if it's based on their usage, they should eventually be able to predict what that's going to be. And that, I agree with Councilwoman Hughes. I like the 40-60 because it does give the customer a little more control. And that's kind of what we've been saying all along. When you have your meters, then you can have more control over what you're going to have to say.
And then, control means that we're going to generate less revenue and come back with a rate increase.
Not necessarily. You're going to have, no, the people that have four kids, for example, they're going to be probably paying a lot more with that variable rate.
That's my point. When you have a, this community is 3.3 persons per household. Why would we want to set up a failure for those families? My point is, you raise your fixed rate where it covers the cost for operations in the city, and you make that rate reasonable for those larger families, which is the majority of this community. I think it's inherently disproportionate to, you know, to keep the fixed rate on the low side. In the variable where you have larger families, you're going to use a lot more water. Or potentially.
Potentially.
At the same time, even if you raise the fixed rate, those that use less water are still going to pay, well, from what I can tell, about $10 a month less as it is today on average. So, it provides, you know, revenue stability, and it provides some stability to the residents. So, why wouldn't we do that? I guess that's what I don't get.
Isn't that part of it to encourage conservation and...
Yeah, but to conservation. We were saving 20% un-metered. We've saved over 30 and 35% in the last two billing cycles, still un-metered for the majority of the city. So, that's, I think, more of an awareness of the public rather than the threat of a meter because they're not paying meter rates.
Well, just a little side note. I would love to see our homes looking a little bit better.
And if you have a higher fixed rate, you would, you might see that.
The other thing, we also talked about our concern. I don't know what the percentages are, but I do know we have a large senior population in this area, and we may have, it may continue to grow with one and two people. So, I think you have to be concerned about both.
They still save money on average under a higher fixed rate as well. They do. But the staff's agrees with me. They do.
We do have that slide. Or we don't have this slide, but...
So, you increase the fixed rate so that we don't encourage conservation, right?
No, you do encourage.
So that, I mean, I understand because I absolutely agree with Councilwoman Hughes. I mean, it's really sad to me to see the condition of many of the homes in our community. I mean, they put, I mean, under the current drought conditions and the not water, and we have homes that are just, it's really sad because their landscapes all die.
I understand.
I don't know if they're going to be able to afford to replace their landscape, but it's always just going to look, continue to look really poor. I mean, some of our neighborhoods are looking really bad. But, but on the other side, I think we still, I mean, water is such a commodity that there also needs to be people like, you know, people who are conservative to be able to have, be able to lower their bills. But if we set up all this fixed rate, they're really not going to be able to do that.
The fixed rate is less than half of what the total rate is. Even at the 50%, it's less than half. So, you still have a large amount to work with. I mean, I, I don't know, I just...
So, you think, so you're...
I would be good with 60-40 flipping it the other, I'd rather go 60-40 the other way. At least. I don't think 70% is out of range. I don't, I don't. I mean, looking at, looking at what the other jurisdictions, how they operate.
So, for every 10% we go up, it looks like we go up about $2, $3. So, basically, that's $3. But the fixed rate goes up for every 10% that we...
I don't know what, I would...
It's about $2.50.
I don't know.
Well, you can kind of look at it and tell.
So, this slide shows for the average user at 30-70, their fix is going to be 10-27. To go to 40-60, that fixed base goes up $3 or so. And to go to 50-50, it goes up another $3 or so.
So, you could almost say to go to this, 60-40.
60-40.
It would go up to about $18, $18.
$18, right.
$18 fixed.
So, the higher your fixed cost, the less fixed or low income can help themselves by conservation. But you would be, those that are using above average would benefit from a higher fixed and a lower variable. So, you're kind of, you're now struggling with the dilemma that staff have of how do you balance this? What do you recommend? And we've sort of taken a shot at what, if you looked it up to the staff, what they would do, but we need you to concur or give us direction otherwise.
Well, that's the thing, regardless, we're going to be back here in two years or to look at this because we're going to have more data and we're going to know what the situation looks like. So, I mean, to say that this is a five-year plan, I mean, we can write a five-year plan. I actually don't like the 3% added on. Just maybe just add that on straight across.
I don't think, we're not doing that.
We're not recommending that. The consultant says if you want to have a fully funded five-year plan including your reserves and your capital costs, they would recommend that we go to an extra 3%. I said, I made a commitment to staff and the public when we were last here, recommend the rate study that we would look at revenue neutrality. We're not trying to increase our revenue. We're just trying to make sure we have enough to operate.
I'll make a motion for a 60% fixed, 40% variable.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Well, I mean, it just, I just think, I mean, increasing that fixed rate, I mean, even though you say 18, you know... though you say 18, you know, even though...
Every, every other jurisdiction, every other jurisdiction around here does the same thing.
I know. So, then the variable rate has to go up, correct?
Excuse me?
The variable rate has to go up?
Has to.
Yeah. So, instead of being the dollar, whatever it is, 20...
It's $3.
On the fixed, it's $3 on the fixed.
No, no. But on the variable, the variable currently...
Dollar 27.
Pardon? Dollar 24. So, do they have to go up if we increase the other? They have to move down.
No.
The revenue neutral?
Name's the same.
Would you like to make your motion again now that I understand?
I recommend that we go 60% fixed, 40% variable.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilor Hewer. Before we go any further, are we okay with that legally? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we are.
Looking to the wrong person.
Ivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
No.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
No.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know that the commodity rate at a 50/50, $5.5, so at, at a, um, 60/40 is probably the...
They have a really low commodity rate.
It depends on where you're at. We have all groundwater here, so we, we don't have any water. We don't do surface water treatment. So, if you're in a total groundwater area, and so even though we looked at the communities around us, a lot of them bring in water with surface water treatment, and that costs a lot of money, and it, you know, stack on the fixed costs and all, when you're looking at groundwater, a dollar for, for a CCA, you're about there. We do have some extensive treatment on horse and man, so you're about there. We can't, we can't, by, and we just can't say, you know, we wanna make it too long. We can't do that. We have to show a nexus between our costs and, um, and our services.
So, by increasing the fixes, they're down the commodities. So, likewise, if we reduce the fix, it brings up the cost of the commodities?
Correct. At a 30/70, you're looking, I believe the commodity was a dollar 44.
Okay. I would like to make a motion, unless there's more questions? I didn't mean to cut you off. At, at this point, and what we know and what we don't know, I'm going to move that we go with the 40/60. I think it gives the citizens more control, but it looks like it helps us stability for the cost for staff and everything.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on.
Make the motion for 55% fixed.
Now, we're starting to sound like an option here.
Look at it, you know, we have a schedule that we need to keep. I think we, you know...
So, actually, we're looking for staff directing, correct? Tonight, we were really looking to direct to get a staff director.
We need to bring something back to initiate the Prop 218 process, and given all the, the facts and figures, we need to finalize our report so that you can adopt it, then we have what we need to propose to the public what that rate would result, resulting rate would be.
So, could we, could we have two rates brought back? I mean, could we have a rate brought back to us showing us exactly what I, what Mr. Campion proposed, and then another one showing us what Mr. Payne proposed?
Yes, you could. I mean, it's really...
Because, I mean, one of the issues we have, I mean, there's four of us here, and it actually takes off five of us to make, I think, to get a really good consensus.
Right. You could have two alternatives brought back to you. They would have to be fully, you know, you'd have to have a full report for each of those. So, that's a fair amount of work for the consultant and for the staff because you want the report to be in its final form as possible so it has all the information, um, that is required under Prop 218 to provide in the notices that would then go out to the property owners and tenants.
I mean, where are we?
From a timing perspective...
We're waiting for a motion, I think.
We do have the ability, if you wanted to look at some additional numbers based on any of your direction, if you wanted to look at a couple of scenarios, we could bring something back at the second meeting in October. We just don't have a lot of time to prepare another staff report, which is sort of due in the next couple of days, but we could just, if you wanna continue this discussion, and we could provide you an updated staff report with some additional scenarios, we can look at that.
Would that fall in line with our deadline as far as the, uh, the law's killing?
If we got final direction in two weeks, we could still bring that back on November 3rd or whatever the first meeting in November would be. Well, it depends on what you're asking us to do. Uh, they've still gotta finalize a report based on the final direction, so we potentially might have to push that from November 3rd to the 17th or whatever the second meeting date is in November. Um, that would still meet our timeframe for a January rollout. Um, uh, we might have to move to this, I think we're already at the second meeting of January, so I might push it to the first meeting in February.
All right.
I have a suggestion. Um, Councilman Campion, would you consider the 50/50?
No.
Okay. And I have no...
No.
...suggestion. I was just thinking of the, um, situation of the timing, and I would feel 50/50 could be, uh, fair, but if you wanna bring back something else, then that's...
I, I don't think, I don't think... I don't think it's a matter of fairness. It's, it's what I, I, I believe is best for the community and the consumer. So, uh, I've, I've listened to staff, and they indicate that, you know, the higher the fixed rate, the better. So, I, I, I tend to believe in, and believe the same way. So, that's, that's what I'm at.
Increasing the fixed rate probably gives us the city more stability. I'm not sure that that's, that's for the rate payer.
Oh, without, without question, you have less swing.
Yeah.
In, in, in your...
So, for the, for the city, yes, it's, that's in a much better situation. For the rate payer...
Sure. I, I mean, otherwise, again, and I'm talking about the majority or, or what the average is when you look at the number of households here, which are not one and two family households. They are family households, two, three, four people and more. Those are the, those are the higher, highest water consumers in the city. The more you have in terms of rate variation under the variable portion of the rate, I think you're gonna see a much higher rate on that side. I think you will.
But I would ask you, wouldn't, I suppose, um, if you looked at the income level of those families, wouldn't they...
I, I'm not talking about income. I'm just talking about every rate payer in the city. I'm not gonna, I'm not, it's, I don't, I don't know how you would break it out by, by, by income.
Well, like I said, I just had a concern for the seniors. Uh, usually, there's one or two members of the family on fixed income. And you're what you're saying...
And they'll still see a rate reduction. They will still see a rate reduction at the 50 or the 60. With, there's no question about it because they use less water.
But you were concerned about the average family, which is three point whatever.
So that they're not paying way up here, the 50, $60 a month, instead of the, what is the average of 28.
Well, I just feel like they probably, I mean, I'm just saying this, are, have a higher income and couldn't afford to...
I, I don't know.
And they probably use more services in the community as well.
Well, I'll make the motion to go with the 50/50 plan.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewer and a second by Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
No.
Okay, now I'll make the motion to continue the meeting till two weeks from now, and to have staff bring back, um, well, bring back further information regarding what a, what 60/40 would look like, what the 60/40 split would look like.
60 fixed, 40 variable. I'd like to amend that motion if I may.
Go ahead.
Add on to it, include the 40/60 as well, including the, uh, usage for both. I'm sorry, what was the question? Including the 40/60. What I wanna see is a live bill, not just what we have here in front of us.
For low volume and high usage?
40/60 and 60/40, yeah, but for, for an average household of four.
13 average user?
Right. Boy, you're gonna be paying a lot.
We're, we're on the rest of the... Now have a meter and go deal with it. Right in the January with a little over 18 minutes, in June, of course. But again, our iteration is off along with the, and I also have a small house, so we live it up.
Does, does staff need direction on whether you wanna go, um, with the Prop 218 for a five-year period or, or not?
My recommendation would be that we restart the five-year clock, and then if we don't need a rate adjustment, we're covered for inflation, uh, but we look to you for direction on your comfort level as, you know, we're gonna have to, whatever we decide, we present to the public and they get to protest.
I, I'd recommend an additional motion amendment that the 218 include the new five-year period and, um, only include the CPI as it is today, correct?
Yes.
An additional motion amendment to the motion.
Well, either of the...
Because we currently have a motion on the floor.
If the, if the major motion accepts the amendments, well, that would be fine.
Would you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
For clarification, it would be truly tied to the CPI or you wanna see a...
Yes, yes, that's the way it's, it has to, correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Will you repeat the motion?
I have, uh, Hewer asking for, to bring back the 40/60 and the 60/40, second meeting in October, to continue the discussion and use the average user in the report and include the five-year, um, plan, or restart the clock for the five-year plan and use the CPI.
You got it. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a second by Councilmember. Just lost it. Campion, thank you. Payne's going up for lunch. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. All right.
I'm just, you first to vote. So, I have just that one right to listen, proceeding with the voting on. My quick question is going to be, I'm a little bit anxious. At what time do the citizens' claws get business to shoot down any second that's over 40/60? At what point can, can we start giving?
Why don't you, what the, why don't you lead the city atticus or come in and lead the city atticus regarding that?
Yes. The Prop 218 process calls for mailing notices out to everybody about whatever the proposed rate would be, depending on what the council decides. That notice will include information about the ability to submit a protest to the proposed rate. If a majority of the, uh, property owners and tenants in the community submit protests, then the rate can't be adopted. So, that's a form of petition, if you will. Yeah, so you'll have the opportunity to, there's a majority ballot protest process.
Does the rate go back to the original rate?
Yes, it'll be the same rate within, remain in effect.
Do you have a question, sir?
I just wanna clarify one thing. Uh, when we're allocating the costs to fix versus variable, you notice like on, on this slide right here, we have approximate 50/50 on there. So, it may not be exactly 40 because we don't want split hairs. We wanna make sure like all personnel goes to fix and that we have a sound relationship as to what portion went to fix, what portion went to variable as opposed to, I mean, some odd numbers, though 37% went to fix the personnel. Why? Or 50/50 is reasonable, 100 is reasonable. I just wanna point that out, that we'll get close to 60/40, and we'll show you what has been shifted over to fix.
Appreciate that. Thank you. With that, the special meeting is adjourned.